Well, good afternoon. It's 3 o'clock on a Thursday, and it's time for the May 27th meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. Welcome. Hopefully, you've had a pleasant day today with the rain stopping and the sun shining. Just a few housekeeping items before we go into the agenda. There will be no executive session following a regular session today. And for those from the public that wish to speak after the meeting, we do have time for public comment. I'd ask that you, we have sign up sheets behind me on the table next to the water bottles. If you'd sign in putting your name, address, an email address so that we could respond, and the subject matter that you wish to address, that would be helpful. And if you could keep your comments to about three minutes or so, for the sake of time. That being said, Gloria, can we call the roll?
Certainly. Ben?
Present.
Kent?
Present.
Paul? Martin?
Present.
Sharon?
On an island by herself, present.
Present.
Hi. And Jim?
Present.
Six present, one so far absent or unaccounted for.
Unaccounted for.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as distributed.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
A second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Okay, let's get to our favorite part of the meeting, the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular session of April 22nd and the claims of May 11th, and then we could discuss after a second.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not...
Excuse me, I did have a point of clarification. We do need to make a minor correction. It says the Board of Library Trustees of the Allen County Public Library met virtually. You did not meet virtually, you were in person when I read it.
It's hard to recognize. Okay, so with that, as an agenda change, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. And let the record show that Paul Moss has arrived. Thank you. Okay, let's move to item four on our agenda, and that's the financial report for 2021 April.
Thank you, Ben. In your packet, of course, are your financial reports. The only line that has gone above benchmark on spending I noted in there is the consultant line that's directly tied to the facility master plan, consultants that are working on that now, as well as the employee engagement study work. So we'll be adding money to that at the year end adjustments. All the other lines are staying in where they're supposed to be, so no news there. Couple of items that are happening, of course, we're in the midst of the audit by State Board of Council, which this year is being done by Crowe LLC. They've outsourced that. So far, the audit's going well. There's obviously the learning curve, so we've been transmitting a lot of information to them virtually. This is being done virtually again this year. They are not in the offices. But so far, they seem to be on schedule, and they're still sticking to their June 1st completion date, which really helps us out because that gives us a lot of time then to get it ready for submission to the GFOA by the 30th of June. So we're looking forward to that. So far, things have gone well, and I've heard nothing from them about exceptions or items that they want to make note of. The other big thing happening right now, obviously, is the kickoff of the budget season, and we're already having some of the webinars. We've got the DLGF and the State Board, one coming up on the second. That's one where they really talk about culminating what happened with the legislative session that might impact the budgets, as well as some of the ideas going forward for what you might want to modify your budget on. Other than that, there's still going to be a number of estimates coming out fairly quickly. The main ones for us are the June 30th. We'll be getting your growth quotient at that point, the maximum amount. We'll be able to raise our expenditures as well as levy. We'll be getting the cap number. That's always an important one for us. We will be getting the local income tax number August 17th at the latest. They try to put that out early, but that's what their calendar is saying. And that's the one that, as I've been talking in the past, would be the one most susceptible to potential drop from the COVID impacts of the pandemic, the income tax numbers. This year, however, we've done very well financially with the tax collections. We had our first advance at the end of May. We'll get a settlement in June. Those seem to be right on target. And in fact, we got notice that the tax caps for '21, when we put the budget together there, the DLGF's estimates were around $2.7 million for the library. They're actually, right now, slated to come in at a little under $2.1 million. So almost a $600,000 difference. So, you know, that is, I think, attributable to the strong real estate values, the values, the assessed values that go into that calculation. So that's good news for us, as well as there was a supplemental local income tax distribution this last week. The library ended up with $388,000 in that, and that was similar to 2020 and '19. And that's an indication that those revenues are strong, because what triggers a supplemental distribution is if collections actually come in greater than 15% of what the state budgeted for that. So it's indicating those income taxes are still strong. So we'll see in August what their estimates are, but I'll be factoring all those things into our 2022 budget. So that's all on that. I think really that's all on the financial side I wanted to talk about at this point, but obviously, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Sharon has a question.
Dave, do you think the library will realize any of the American relief, the ARP funds?
I think all of that will come, pass through, like, through the state. And I know we're hearing about a lot of the LSTA grants or IMLS grants that are coming. They'll come through the state library and then pass through that.
Dave, I have a little bit of information.
Yeah, I was just about to say, Susan has been plugged in on the director's side.
So the state library has been informed, they are due for about $4 million of those ARPA funds. In the coming weeks, they are going to be announcing competitive grant opportunities for public libraries throughout the state.
Okay. And what about the state's ready funds? Will we have an opportunity to participate? I know that one requires that we have a regional plan partnership with two joining counties, but do we know if the library will have an opportunity to participate in those fund dollars?
I am unfamiliar with that. I apologize.
Okay. It's ready fund, R-E-A-D-I?
I think with that, Sharon, because I'm involved in that through the New Island Alliance as well, and I know that one in particular is being organized through the Local Economic Development Organization, which in our case would be Greater Fort Wayne, Inc.
Right.
And so I think if the library is interested, or if there are some opportunities there, I agree with you, I think there's opportunity there on that end of it. There are, there's a lot to it. Of course, the details aren't all fully released yet, but I also know there's some private matching dollars and things along those lines that would have to be in place for some of the projects if they would be included. But I definitely think it's something that, you know, as GFW's exploring that, Susan, I think it probably would be good, to your point, Sharon, to at least have a sit down, understand, is there anything that could potentially fit within those parameters?
Yeah, I'm looking for all the opportunities that we can with all the funds that are seeming like flooding in from multiple directions. And if there's an opportunity to help us with our capital campaign, then we're going to be for our, just looking at ideas.
And that, the ready funds are the state's use of the ARP funds.
Okay.
So it's just a new program.
New name, new bucket.
Yeah, that the Indiana Economic Development Corporation has, well, the state budget created it. They put $500 million in the budget for it. And this is similar, some people are calling it the Regional Cities 2.0, for those who remember Regional Cities in the area. And that had $142 million in the budget, and so this is obviously more than three times that. So from that perspective, it's significant. However, it is because it's ARP money, then it's federal dollars passing through the state, so then everything has to follow federal guidelines and standards as far as the projects are developed. So just keeping all that in mind, there's, to your point, there's just a lot, a lot going on right now, and everybody's just kind of trying to figure it out, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the financial?
I had a couple of questions, Dave. On the income side of things, I saw the gifts, grants, and contributions were significantly higher than last year on that. And I didn't know if that's specific to the gift that was received, or if that's an insurance thing, because I also noted that the expenditure on the insurance line is quite a bit higher as well.
Wouldn't have been tied to that. Is that on the detailed budget report?
The combined statement of revenue is what I'm looking at, the very first page.
Statement of revenues. Are you sure that isn't the foundation?
He's got $840,000.
Gifts, oh, eight, yeah, sure. Though, yeah, the gift funds, those are the pass-through numbers that are coming through. So those involve everything from the summer learning program, money from Follinger, to the, you know, monies coming in to reimburse for the Roland Center.
Okay.
So that's probably, no, that makes sense, because I was just noting it was like over
a million dollars higher, and I was just like, why in the world would that be?
Yeah, no, those are coming in from the past. And I thought you were referring to the general fund, but those are in the gift funds.
Yeah, yeah, in that one. And then, I guess then, just asking then, on the insurance side of it, insurance expenditures are obviously up. Is that just related to the activity that we just would see in?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, actually, our total insurance estimates for this year from our brokers are staying pretty flat. So, you know, they're coming in at different, you know, are you referring to, let's see, 100, the, oh, that's under itself insurance fund.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that we just had more payouts from our self-insurance fund. Sorry, I have to clarify insurance, I know when you say that.
No, those are medical claim payments, pharmacy claims. In fact, we just had a meeting this past week with our broker and had some estimates there. And pharmacy claims are very high this year. They're much higher than they have in the past. So you're seeing that reflected in that number.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Any other questions on the April financial report? If not, entertain a motion, we accept as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. How about the claims, David?
Yep, claims.
Anything neat in claims?
Actually, there's about $398,000 this time, which isn't that much, but three claims account for $250,000 of it. The first one is New Era, which used to be ESCO, they are a lot of the electronics and cabling for us. That's tied to the Roland Center, all the work that's going in there because of all the technology there. So that's their billing. $100,000 was for Overdrive, they're the supplier of our eBooks and, you know, streaming music and things like that. So we had to increase the subscription on that because of the usage of it, still going higher. And then the last one is our favorite one, I&amp;M, just because of the system-wide power grid. So the rest of them were just miscellaneous, made up the other $50,000.
Any questions? You're going to circulate for signature?
Yep, I will bring it around for signature.
Okay. Kurt, how about a Roland Center?
I think it's still going to vote out. Approval of claims.
Oh, okay. Can we have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
And a second, any discussion?
I'll second, Sharon can have the first.
Okay. All those in favor, the approval of the claims signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Now let's hear an update of the Roland Center.
Thank you very much, Ben, and board members. I totally and completely appreciate your time this afternoon. I also want to respect your time and leave some time for questions, if there are any, at the end. I think I need new bifocals. There we go. It's just always exciting for me to talk about the Roland Center. This has been a journey since September of 2009, when the collection was distributed to the state of Indiana and then further distributed to the state museum and the Allen County Public Library. We have just had an amazing amount of time engaging our citizens about Lincoln and that Lincoln is not, is not dead in the sense of the collection still lives. A lot of people still think, oh, that left when Lincoln moved out, when the museum closed. And no, it's still very much alive. So I want to provide you with just a couple of minutes of update. I hope some of you noticed what a handsome attraction to the Great Hall the outside of the Roland Center is. Physically, the space is coming together really well. And on budget, surprisingly, during a pandemic, running a construction project during a pandemic, it's amazing for it to come in on budget. So a lot of work on a lot of people's part makes that happen. We have had a number of our patrons comment on, wow, this is exciting, something new, I wonder what's going on there. So we have had already many opportunities to talk with patrons about, we're getting there, and we're getting there fairly quickly. Not as quickly as we originally planned, but again, construction in a pandemic. So what are our biggest challenges right now? It's what organizations and companies all over the world are facing, and that's broken supply chains. So these nice display cabinets, which I will show you where they will go, scheduled to arrive the beginning of May, arrived yesterday in our construction company's warehouse. And they actually weren't made here in the United States like they normally would be made, because of the broken supply chain. They were made in Germany. So they trekked their way across the Atlantic, were caught in customs in New York for a while, and then finally arrived here. And we're our highest aspirations that they have arrived intact. And so far, it looks, it looks good. One of the main other broken supply chain things, as you may have noticed from all the General Motors trucks that are parked in fields and lots all over the county and beyond, are computer chips. So the Roland Center will be this amazing mixture of physical items and virtual items. You'll be hard pressed to find another place, literally in the United States, that has this wonderful mix of hundreds of physical items that you can actually look at, and hundreds upon hundreds of virtual items that you can actually create your own experience. So we have had a computer chip, the main chip that will govern all of the virtual experiences on order since February. Actually, our contractor has. It is now slated to arrive the 1st of June. When's the 1st of June? It's next week. We still don't have a date on exactly when that computer chip is going to arrive. We continue to press everything forward, as much physical work that can be done, as much of the coding and programming behind the scenes that can be done is being done. Our Lincoln librarians were trained on the Content Management System, which is pretty cool, that really controls from one master control, all the virtual displays throughout the entire Roland Center. So really neat things, really neat things are happening. Wanted to just share my excitement with you. I know it looks very non-Roland Center-ish, but the red stars show you where all of the really major virtual exhibits are going to be, where someone can come up and touch something, can use a kiosk, and create their own experience. And by create their own experience, they can pick out something in the Lincoln Collection and look at it floor-to-ceiling size. And we'll see a slide in a moment. So all the red stars, virtual experiences, the two blue are purple buttons, circles, that's where physical displays are going to be. The cabinets that just arrived at CME Corp. yesterday, we will be able to display hundreds of physical items. We will be able to combine the experience. So if someone is interested in maybe Civil War Lincoln as Commander in Chief, maybe Lincoln in Indiana, we can put things in the physical cases and change the virtual displays to more fit that theme of Lincoln in Indiana, or Lincoln as Commander in Chief, or Lincoln as lawyer. So a lot of flexibility. We're excited about that because it will drive people, entice people to come back and see it again, because they can create their own adventure. So we're really pleased about that. Another point of excitement is what's in the middle of the room. So we have kind of a room inside a room. It's called the immersive projection room. We'll have to come up with a better title than that. But in this room, we can seat classes of schoolchildren. We can turn it into just another part of the exhibit area, the gallery area. But basically, on the left-hand side of the star, basically from doorframe to doorframe, there's a 180 projection. So it will be like you'll be able to walk into a Lincoln era experience. And so we have a number of panoramic photographs. I want to share just a quick video with you. This is just a piece, a thin slice of the technology that is going to be in this space. This was recorded here at the library in Access Fort Wayne with one of our, one of our library count.
The legacy and lessons of Abraham Lincoln's life and presidency have never felt more relevant than they do right now. Who and what shaped him to become the leader that America needed as it faced Civil War? How did he manage rivalries and varied viewpoints to move his administration towards shared goals and outcomes? Did personal tragedies affect how he approached his role as a wartime president? For those wishing to study Lincoln and his contemporaries, the Lincoln Financial Foundation Collection offers unique access to thousands of primary sources, tens of thousands of items, two physical locations, one incomparable collection made up of assets highlighting Abraham Lincoln's life and times. What once started as the largest private Lincoln research collection in the world has grown to be a premier public collection dedicated to the 16th President of the United States. The collection includes photos, documents and letters, newspapers and journals, books, sculptures, works of art, music, and other artifacts that make the history come alive. Come experience and explore this outstanding collection.
So that's just one of many experiences that we have planned. Again, in your minds, I picture this as a 180. This is Lincoln at Antietam, and we have mixed sound what Army Camp sound would sound like, and that will play when this image is up. At some point in the future, when the technology gets a little better, we will actually be able to make some of that picture move, as if there were wind in the trees, as if there were soldiers just arriving or soldiers leaving. And you might think, eh, why? To engage people, to actually be able to feel like you're living the history is a really awesome way to get young people and more mature people engaged in actually what might have happened. People will be able to almost walk into this picture because it's a 180. Kids will be able to go right up to it as if they were standing with these soldiers. And again, floor-to-ceiling image. So we're really excited about that. One of the neatest assets is this Lincoln family album. We are the only place in the world that has the photographs and images from the Lincoln family album. They have been digitized. Someone will be able to use a kiosk and pick any one of these Lincoln family members, click on it, and up will come a bigger picture, how they were related, other pictures besides the one that's visible right here in this main screen. You'll be able to really do your own exploration of the Lincoln family album. It's pretty amazing what one can discover on one's own. The little golden dots there, those are all the places where there's technology, where our Lincoln librarians, from their computer, from their smart device, from their iPad, will be able to control all of the images on those. So unlike a traditional museum where it might take weeks, if not months, to flip an exhibit, yeah, we'll still have to flip some of the physical exhibits, but the virtual exhibits could literally flip in a couple of hours. The high bar that we set for our partners in this project was, we'd like to have a meaningful experience for kids in the morning, for a local community interest group in the afternoon, and Lincoln scholars in the evening, and the Roland Center actually looked different for each of those. So you might be interested in, so when's this going to finally open? And the answer is, yes. So we originally, before broken supply chains, et cetera, were projecting about now. And a couple of months ago, we thought, well, it's going to be late spring, like June 19th. The way we're looking at now with a couple of major items out right now, we're looking probably at the end of June, 1st of July. Stephanie has put together a really nice, what we're going to call a soft opening, or a couple of soft openings. We certainly, as soon as we can, want the Roland family and their guests, the major donor for this project, to come and experience it. And we have been walking with them through this journey, and they've appreciated staying up to date on what's going on in the center. Certainly, the Friends of the Lincoln Collection and the donors will have sort of their own little private tour, as well as all of the Allen County Public Library boards, the Board of Trustees, the Friends, and the Foundation. We'll also be wanting to kind of make it a nice family affair for ACPL staff, or staff who have wondered about it, staff who have endured the noise of construction and the disruption of construction. And then we're also interested in elected officials and the media getting a look at the collection as well. We're still talking with the Friends and with the leadership team here at the library on when the official, maybe ribbon cutting opening might be. But we think a more staged approach, a more personal approach, especially when there's a couple of squishy dates and things that we really don't have totally under our control. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Great presentation, Kurt. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Very nice. Well, here's one that adds joy to the season, the Spark Summer Learning Program. And where's Mara?
She's right there.
Mara, you're on.
We need to change the volume, because the special treat that we have at the end of my presentation is a little bit louder. I'm Mara Honeywell. I'm the Youth Services Manager here at the Allen County Public Library, and it is always my privilege, right around this time of year, to get to talk with you about the summer learning program. Spark stands for Science, Play, Arts, Reading, and Knowledge, and it is a celebration of everything that the library embodies, of lifelong learning and discovery, and giving people of all ages, families, adults, people that are coming back into the library with family members that they maybe haven't been to the library in a while. We try to blow the doors off and make it really look like a party. So you see, we have a beautiful color palette right in front of you. This is our Spark Summer Learning Guide. It is bright, it is exciting, and so is our program. And so is our program this year. So I want to tell you a little bit about what makes our program unique this year as we are in 2021 on the other side of the pandemic. You'll see that there's a lot more stuff in there than usual. And that's because we're really trying to meet our community where they're at right now. So during summer, there's this traditional, you can read books and earn prizes. That's really exciting. We also allow for people to write book reviews, complete family-oriented activities about science and engineering and arts so that they can earn points towards those prizes as well. And that's what makes our program a learning program because we really take a holistic approach to all of the different ways that people engage with the library during the summer. There's a lot of really exciting things that are on the plate. So I want to tell you what we're doing with programming this year because it's very different than what we've ever done before. And I think it shows truly exactly how we're working in every way possible to meet our community. So in a traditional year, we do outreach programming in the summer, and then we do some exciting things in our library locations. This year, because of COVID, it's been quite a weird year for everybody. And we have faced that challenge really head-on. So our staff are planning outdoor programs for all ages that will be happening at many locations across the city. We're doing the grab-and-go, the to-go programs that you've seen in the past, that people, the bags where people can take them home. Those have been hugely popular. In fact, as I'm contacting many of our outreach partners, they say, and you're going to bring us more of those programs in a bag, right? Because all of the supplies are there, and they're available for families to do together. We will be still continuing to provide virtual program offerings. And we are, as, as we navigate this virtual world and this virtual environment, we've learned that there's a lot of different ways that people choose to access those programs. So not only will be, they be offered live via Zoom, but we're also doing on-demand programs that are available at any time for families to be able to work within their schedule. And I think that's really what we've learned is that we want to be able to provide these remarkable learning opportunities for families at any time when they come into the library. So along with that, we're also increasing the number of self-directed learning opportunities, pop-up sorts of events that happen in all of our library locations. So when you go into a library this summer, someone will say to you, oh, do you want to do a scavenger hunt? There's turtles hidden all throughout the department in celebration of National Turtle Month that's happening right now. And we're trying to give families new ways to navigate through their library space. And I think it's a really exciting change that I'm very, very honored to be able to talk to you about today. A few of, another big change is that we are partnering differently with some of our school systems locally. We use an online program called Beanstack, which is a program that's used by libraries across the country to track reading time. It also enables families to basically be able to choose how they want to participate in the program. They can have it right on their phone if that's what works for them, or they can have it on a piece of paper and a bookmark if that's what works for them. And through Beanstack, then, we're able to really collect excellent data to find out how our patrons are participating in the program and then be able to share that information at a, at a kind of an overarching level with our school districts. So we're thrilled to be able to report to Fort Wayne Community Schools and to Northwest Allen County Schools about how their students at a grade level or at a school level are participating in our program, what their, how many minutes they're reading, who's doing act, or how they're doing activities. And this will then really communicate to our schools, this is how your students are learning this summer, and also then be able to say, these are places where we have to grow. And I'm very, very excited that we're able to have these conversations because at the end of the day, students need to continue to learn all summer long. And every opportunity that we have to make that happen is important. One more thing, which is a whole page in that guide that you're flipping through, and I have a video for right here. Woo! Is that we, because of the way that we track our time on Beanstack, we're able to communicate a community reading goal. And that is important because it's great to get individual prizes, especially when those prizes are free books. But it's really exciting to work together as a community that celebrates reading to work towards something bigger than ourselves. So this year, we have a very big 10 million-minute community goal. And once we hit, and we will, 10 million minutes of reading this summer, a donor has agreed to help to provide food for the pets with our partners at Humane Fort Wayne for an entire month. So that is a big deal. And there are some wonderful people and some very wonderful kittens that are going to tell everybody all about this.
What's better than snuggling one of these little guys?
Curling up with a great book? The theme of the library's Summer Learning Program is Tales.
And Tales. And by tracking your reading this summer,
you'll be helping him and all the animals at Humane Fort Wayne.
And if our community reaches a reading goal of 10 million minutes,
a donation will be made to Humane Fort Wayne that will feed all the animals for a whole month.
So sign up for Summer Spark.
Log your reading minutes.
And help animals in need.
So that was the best day of 2021 when there were kittens right there in the Children's Services Department.
My career has peaked, seriously.
I've achieved the ultimate. So that's a little bit of what we have in store for this summer. We are really, really excited about this. And we are excited to be able to roll this out on June 1st for our community. So if I look a little bit sweaty and distracted today, that's because we have been working hard. And this is absolutely a system-wide organizational effort to unwrap this big gift for our community, starting June 1st.
Thank you, Mara. Questions, comments?
I would just like to comment our thanks on behalf of all of us at Northwest Allen County Schools. It's the first time that we're really going to get the kind of information that we want. And we're really there with you as a partner. So I don't know what's going to happen this year, but I'll tell you, those prizes for the teens, I think that's going to motivate them, you know?
I, I think so. And I just, I think that being able to really say to our school districts, this is, this is how your students are utilizing the library in the summer, sets the stage for very new conversations as a community that I can't wait to have. So thank you so much.
Mara, would you mind speaking just really briefly about Team Read and the NIC? Because I think that's such an interesting partnership.
Sure. Well, so Team Read, as I hope you know, is one of the signature programs for summer. It is funded, of course, our Summer Learning Program is funded by the Fullminger Foundation. And Team Read is this very cool youth employment program. We hire teens 16 to 19 to work for the library during the summer. In a normal year, they get to do outreach to many organizations like Parks and Rec Boys and Girls Club throughout the city. This year, due to COVID, we've had to alter exactly how that program works. And so we have hired a smaller cadre of students, and they're going to be working at our library branches, which for many of them, I have a feeling is going to be sort of their dream come true. And as a part of that, we really are digging into looking at this as an opportunity to increase their job skills and to increase their organizational awareness for how all of the pieces of the community work together. So one of the organizations that's going to come in and provide trainings for these students is the, is the NIC. And they'll be doing four sessions for us, talking about entrepreneurship to this cadre of students that are working for us. And they're doing a really great job of not only couching entrepreneurship as here's how you start your own business, but also how you talk about yourself, how you talk about your dreams and your goals and your vision, and how to be able to take these things that you're passionate about and turn it into a career. So it's just, it's one of those things that I'm really excited. It's new, and I think it's going to make our program more impactful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Well, let's move now to committee reports. Marty, Capital Project?
Well, thank you, Ben. Just reminder, I'm the chair of the Capital Projects Committee. Ben and Kent are also on that. We've approved and we're moving forward to move forward with our facilities assessment. And just a couple bullet points, give you, get everyone an update of where we're moving forward to right now. First off, two of the principal people were here in person earlier this month. Kent and I had a chance to meet them as well. And they've had a tour of all of the facilities and all the locations during the week of May the 10th. The staff survey has gone out. It was launched back on Monday, May 24. It's going to run through next week, Sunday, June 6. It's for all staff. And so far, we've had 72 staff members respond already. We're hoping for more. And I'm hoping we get everybody, but I think we're going to get a significant response from the staff, which I'm very happy about. The foundation meeting is coming up on June 3rd. And we have Rick and June, the two principals I was talking about, who are going to be speaking at that to the foundation members. They're also going to be back here June 7 and 8 and to conduct staff focus groups as well. And then Kim's working with Rick and June to select dates for the public engagement sessions. Probably mid to late June is what we're looking at right now. Maybe early July, we'll just kind of time it, get it timed up right and speak with that Boswick Design to do that. We're also planning to do that public survey in English and Spanish and working to finish that up as well and get good dates for that. Any questions? I'd be glad to try to answer or direct it over to Kim to answer, so, or Susan. So any questions wanted by anyone? I see none. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Good report. Thank you. Well, let's, while we're on the subject of reports, let's do the director's report.
Hi, and I gave you a very hefty report this time. You could count it towards our 10 million-minute reading goal, I think. I think Mara would be totally fine with that. But I submitted a written director's report, but a few items I wanted to mention in particular. As you know, our esteemed Director of Human Resources, Kendra, tomorrow is her last day. And this has been Kendra Fest all week. We've been celebrating Kendra. And we are just so grateful for her numerous contributions to the library and her leadership, particularly during these COVID times. And she is going to be missed greatly. We did advertise for someone who's going to be very hard to replace, Kendra. And we had 46 applicants. So we were really pleased with that pool. And the candidates were very strong. And we have already scheduled a first round of interviews for June. And we will be having a series of interviews with the hope to have a candidate in place by August. And in these interim weeks, three people are replacing Kendra. It's Denise, Dave, and I. We are dividing up aspects of Kendra's work, and we will be keeping those irons in the fire for these next few weeks and months in the interim period. I also wanted to share excellent news that the Library Foundation notified the library of a gift in the amount of $400,000 from the Sloan Family Estate. The Sloan family was from Iowa, and they were appreciative patrons of our Genealogy Center and Collection. So that is a relationship that was built over numerous years. I'm looking at Kurt. And relationships matter, and relationships pay off. So we're just thrilled about that. And I also wanted to bring your attention to a partnership that we do. I'm going to insert in my monthly director's report something called Partnership Spotlights because what I've been discovering is I'm going out and meeting people and meeting agencies. I'm coming back to the library all excited. Everybody, we've got to do a partnership with blank. And I hear, Susan, we've been partnering with them for years, and here's what we're doing, which is great. The Fort Wayne Housing Authority has been a partner of ours for a while. And what's really excellent about these partnerships is that it really involves staff from all of our locations and all of our departments and in different positions in the organization. So Molly Waddell, who is a Youth Services Specialist at Hessen Castle, she's been performing storytimes for Fort Wayne Housing Authority for quite a while and also bringing books to the children and residents there. So I was just so thrilled to hear about that. And every month, I would just like to highlight some of these community partnerships that we have because they really do touch all aspects of the county. Any questions about the director's report in particular?
Your, this is the, also the data that was included as well, correct?
Yes, yes, I have some information on that, too.
And I found that was interesting as I looked through the various data points. And again, as I look through that, it reminds us, it reminds me as a board member of how well, how, how well-funded of a system that we have here. And then also just the, the reach that we have on that end of it. And I just thought it was, it was really interesting just to kind of look at, you know, we're currently, I guess with registration last year, we're at 51% of the county is registered as card users. And, and as you pointed out in your summary, there's really not a whole lot of communities to compare Allen County Library System to. And Indianapolis was a lot of them. And sometimes, especially in the business and economic development world, we like to use Indy and compare, how can we be like them? And I think in this, in this way, there are a lot of areas where we're outshining Indy on, on things, especially when we look at, you know, our operating expense per capita, per person, is $79 versus 48 in Indy. So that, to me, says there's, you know, more programming. There's more opportunities for people to engage in the system on that end of it. And then our collection development is, you know, averages, I guess it averages out to $7.94 per capita versus 448 in Indianapolis. And so I just thought it was interesting as I read through that because, you know, we just, we need to celebrate when we have that. And so just to remind everybody that, you know, we're grateful. And as we continue to come back stronger than ever, I guess, from COVID, I really look forward to the new programming and all the different things that are probably going to come out of this as all the evaluations have happened, so.
I believe that's a testament about all the people who have been involved with the library system for many, many years. And we wouldn't be in the position that we are in now if it hadn't been that, the background. And at the present moment, all of the rest of you are new, some of the new ones, your individuals, you're bringing new, fresh ideas which will make it even better.
Absolutely. So yes, in addition to my director's report, there are three additional reports. One is your monthly collection management report, and that is a report that you get monthly. And I do want to give my thanks to the main library manager, Nate Bernard, because he puts a lot of detailed work into providing this report every month and compiling the statistics. And this report details the items added and removed from the collection and the reason why they are removed. So I talked to Nate recently, and he said that in these recent months, our librarian staff are putting a lot of attention into our nonfiction collection, particularly our nonfiction fact books. Because as you can imagine, those can get outdated pretty quickly. And we have been replacing those. He mentioned that in the juvenile section, for instance, we found some state books from the 70s and 80s. And those aren't going to be very helpful to children completing homework. And I am just very impressed with the care and thought that our librarians put into ensuring our collection stays current to meet patron needs. And Denise did also submit the report on our strategic plan. And I know she would be happy to answer any questions. And she also put those, those data points together for statewide comparisons, for efficiencies. But one thing on the strategic plan update that I found really interesting, if you go to page two of that, and you're very weighty packet, for the focus area of a culture of collaboration, leadership, and learning, and the investment statement broadened staff capabilities, and that's on page two of the strategic plan update, staff training hours per full-time equivalency in 2019 were 62.2. And in 2020, that shot up to 196. Now, of course, that was due to the stay-at-home mandate, but I also think it tells another story. It shows how staff found an opportunity in the midst of a really stressful and scary time to better themselves. And I think the organization became better prepared and better skilled because of it. And also, if you look to the charts on page 12 and 13 of that strategic plan update, it shows our increasing Wi-Fi traffic and our internet bandwidth. And it shows that we are keeping up with our patrons' increasing Wi-Fi needs. Any other questions that I can answer? Or I might tap Denise on the shoulder as well.
Denise, is there anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. Good report. Thank you. We have a proposal in front of us. We have a proposal in front of us called Fresh Start. This is a subject we discussed several years ago about amnesty, some of which we implemented for a period of time. But this is a much broader proposal. So Susan, you want to walk us through this?
Thank you so much, Ben. So to be very honest, I didn't expect to be coming to you less than three months in with such a significant ask. But as I bet out in the community, talking to educators, talking to parents, talking to students, talking to other nonprofit and government agencies, I think the need is too great to wait any longer. I think we all can acknowledge that the youth of Allen County have experienced harm during this pandemic to their mental health and to their learning. And I really believe that we can be a strong partner in making them whole again. Right now, about 5,200 youth, 17 and under, are currently blocked from checking books out from our shelves due to fines and fees. And what I am requesting for your consideration is a fresh start amnesty where these fines and fees are forgiven. What this is not is creating a fine-free status permanently for youth. That's a separate conversation that I would like to have eventually, but tonight's not the night. Right now, we want to get these kids access to the library again in time for summer learning and in time for back to school. We've been in communication with all of the school districts. And all of them are encouraging summer reading in some form or fashion this summer. Fort Wayne Community Schools is asking their kids to read 30 minutes a day. It looks a little different in each district, but the goal is the same. It's just to keep kids reading all summer long, so they come back to school in the fall prepared to learn. The pandemic has taken a toll on student success. In 2019, Fort Wayne Community Schools had a 79% passing score on their critical third grade I-read test. And this year, that score has dropped to 59%. And I believe that access to reading materials is integral to student success. The total amount that would be forgiven is approximately $300,000. Now, I think that doesn't tell the full story, because quite frankly, that might be monies that we never see. We don't send children to our collection agency, nor do I think we should. So there's a chance that this money would not have been recovered to begin with. And also, of that $300,000, the majority of that is overdue fee, fines. So that is not an item that was lost. That was just an item that was returned and came back late. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. And I also have some staff from our circulation department here, if there are any questions that they could answer as well.
I am supportive of the concept, which we implemented prior to your arrival in a short period of time. But how will we communicate this to those that would be affected?
That's a very good question. And we are prepared to do a full-on publicity blast with this, using all of our media channels. We are also hoping to get some financial support from the foundation, if this is passed tonight, in order to help promote the message. And we also will be communicating this to the schools. And yes, school is about to end, but there's still communication with the students and the families all summer long through the school districts. So we would work through them as well.
Sharon?
It seems like we did an amnesty program recently with fines, and I could be wrong. But what's the time period that this forgiveness will run over? How far back are we going?
So this would go back, this would erase any accounts for youth. So these figures go back, and I'm looking at my circulation friends over there. Is it about seven years? Seven years. And it's only for youth 17 and under?
I think the part that puzzles me is, for some reason, I'm remembering that we've done some kind of fine amnesty or fee amnesty within the last, at least since I've been on the board. And it's been a short period of time that I've been here. So I'm trying to figure out how we have that, such a large gap.
Stephanie is raising her hand, so I will let her speak to that.
So Sharon, you're remembering correctly. It took place last fall. And the focus was really, if you bring back items that you've been holding on to that are damaged, that have been long overdue, that you found while you were cleaning out your closets during COVID, bring those back and we will erase associated fines and fees for those materials. However, what Susan referenced was, the majority of the youth fines and fees are related to just overdues. You've received those materials. So for that particular campaign that we did previously, it would not have helped that audience that returned it, but still had outstanding.
Hmm, okay. It, it answers the question, I guess. It doesn't serve my memory. I, I think I was remembering that a little bit different. But I do know that we had asked for the material to be back. But ultimately, if we, if we vote in affirmative for this today, it strikes the slate clean for all of our youth and we get to move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I did, I guess I had two questions. One, Susan, just can you explain the process of how you came to the proposal, who you talked to in the community, and also in the staff? What kind of, have you been talking to circulation throughout the branches and the like? I guess that's kind of, I'd like to know the process.
Yes, yes. All of the above. I've talked to leadership in all four school districts and also some special groups within the school district. For instance, the person who is in charge of the transitional housing program for Fort Wayne Community Schools, i.e. the students who are experiencing homelessness. I've talked to the person in charge of the English Language Learners Program at Fort Wayne Community Schools. There's also been extensive staff discussions, as you might imagine, both with Mara and her team, with the circulation department and her team, and also just frontline staff who are working desk, who every day are having to tell families that, I'm sorry, you've got a $16 library fine and you can't check out this board book. That's happening literally every day in our location.
For, for the sake of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the proposal as presented in a second, and we can continue our discussion.
So moved on the proposal.
Second.
Second.
Gloria? Okay, is there any further discussion?
So is this going to be a annual or every-two-year event that we're doing this type of thing? Or how, what's the long-term solution here?
That's a really good point. And I think we don't have plans to do this again. Right now, it's a one-off. But I do think we're going to get a lot of good data from it. If we revisit this six months from now, eight months from now, and there are children, a sizable amount of children still blocked because of overdue fines, I think we probably need to look at that overdue fine schedule and see if that's something we want to continue with. I think we'll get a lot of good data from this.
Well, I agree with Sharon. My recollection is sketchy, as always, but I, I kind of made the assumption that we were wiping the slate clean for everybody, and this is before you were here. So if we approve this, there's no other category of people or anything, patrons out there, anything like that, that we're not talking about?
Adults.
It's everything, right?
Over 18, or 18 and over.
Okay, but we already did that, right?
No, only if they brought the items back. And if those items came, I guess, I'll just, the way I recall it is, if they brought the item back, then that item was removed, but other fines, if they would have had them, would have remained.
So how, what percentage of items have already come back? Because you just said, I think, Stephanie.
Yeah, but, but.
Most of these have been returned, it's just overdue?
So in line with the data that Susan presented earlier, the $300,000 for juvenile fines, those reflect late fines. So that the child brought the item back, but they still accumulated a fine. This is not linked primarily to lost item replacement costs. When we did the amnesty last fall, that was specific to lost items. Brought back the lost item. And we wiped those fines associated with that particular item. But if you were to return the item, kind of late fee from it, that was not forgiven, I guess.
Okay.
And Paul, any further question?
No.
No, I seem to recall, I thought the one that preceded this dealt with the fines attached as well as the physical item. I, I did not realize that. This is more ephemeral. This isn't tangible books or items. This is the fines attached to the late return, for the most part.
About 67, if I'm reading it correctly, there's about $67,000 worth of materials that we're also forgiving. That, that, that's a fee, I guess, at that point, right? Because they would have to replace that book normally.
Correct.
But the balance, that 239,000, would be fines that are just, like my daughter, who doesn't bring it back on time.
So I guess my question then, because we, Paul and I, I can lump us together, Paul, we clearly misunderstood what the last amnesty was for. And I think what Paul may have been asking, or I hope he was asking, is, is there outside of this 300? This is just late fees. So there could be something else that there would need to be an amnesty for. Are there, if these books have been turned in and we've accumulated roughly 300K of books that have been turned in late, and so we're, we're looking to forgive those, what about the books that are still out there that haven't been turned in? Or the amnesty, what, or, I guess my concern is, is, will this remove all barriers from any of those teens who have books, who have late fees, who have anything, so that they can come into the library and start anew? As if this was a new card?
That's exactly what we're proposing, absolutely.
So there's no AR sitting out there right now for fines or anything like that after this? No accounts receivable after this?
This would be zeroed out as of?
For 17 and under.
For 17 and under.
17 and under.
No accounts receivable as far as fines are concerned?
No late fees, no missing books, no stolen, none of that.
Okay. So why do we have a fine system in place then, ongoing after this? What's, what's the reasoning behind keeping fines even in place?
I think that's a really good question and part of a bigger budget discussion. Because we do count for fines for a small part of our revenue, a very small part, but it is considered in the budget that Dave prepares every year.
2020 was a weird one, but in 19, it accounted for 450,000.
I'm not really concerned about the revenue piece of it. I mean, I don't think we should be in the business of making money because of fining people. I'm more interested in what's the solution for incentivizing people to return property that is taxpayer, library property? And how do you do that? What's the long-term solution?
Kim, did you have, you brushed your hand back there.
Oh, I just, I just.
And this is Mike from our circulation department.
So you were asking about what happens going forward. So all these fines as of the date of June 3rd, anything on the accounts will be gone. But if they still have a book out, or and it's lost, they haven't, the month until July 31st to bring it in, those fines will be forgiven. But if they check something out on the 4th, and they don't bring it back and accrue fines, they will, they will continue to be fined. So this is all retroactive. It's not, not dealing with things that are already.
No, I, I.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear, clear.
I like your Dunder Mifflin anthem. Sometimes it feels like the office.
This is kind of a philosophical question, is it not? And how libraries work and whatnot?
It's an existential question for some of us.
And I don't know enough about how other libraries operate with fines in there. Maybe that is something that could be looked into in the future.
Absolutely. It is getting more and more common for libraries to reexamine their fine structure and go fine-free. Many libraries have found that removing fines has actually encouraged people to bring back their items, because it's less punitive and there's less shame. Most libraries, I haven't heard of a library that isn't billing somebody for a lost item. That is usually still part of even a fine-free library. So I guess that is also your motivation to bring it back, because eventually, you're going to get a bill, because it's going to be lost to us and we're going to need to charge you for the replacement fee for the item.
That makes perfect sense. Sorry.
No, you're fine. It was your floor, I'm sorry. Do we have a policy in place for how long an item can be late returned before it moves over to missing? What's that date line?
It's one month.
One month?
Yep.
Any further questions?
Well, I, I'm just going to make another comment, and you can think I'm crazy or not. But this seems to be, could be, whatever is decided, a wonderful project for some high school students to come up with some creative ways to encourage people to return their books and not have fines. You know, it's, I could see that percolating in some people's minds. So we're not there now, but something to explore.
If I could, I, do we have, do we have a motion yet?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay. I'm going to support it this year, because I think it has been a very unusual year. I'm kind of with Paul, though. I, I've been paying fines for a long time on books I return and books I've lost. And frankly, I, I do worry somewhat about, yeah, I certainly understand it, and this year I support this. But, and I've thought about this whole fine thing. It's been brought up before, whether we should have them or not. And as Paul and I think Gloria are saying, what do we do if we don't do it for people? I think this year, I will support waiving it and starting a fresh start, with the understanding I may not be in favor of a no-fine system for youth in the future. Maybe I'll be in favor of a, you know, a larger one until, you know, a larger cap, until we actually cut off access and type. But in that sense, at least this year, I'll be in favor of this, as it stands right now.
Anyone else wish to address, Sharon again?
I'm sorry, one last question. You mentioned that this was over a seven-year span and that there's like 300K that we have not been able to collect. Is there any idea how much we have collected over that seven-year span?
Not on these items, I couldn't tell you. I mean, like I said, we've been averaging a high of 750,000 to 450,000 over the last seven years.
And, okay.
So annually.
All right, thank you.
How much of that was Marty's fine?
A good portion, a huge portion.
Yeah, way too much.
A question on the data side of it, too. I'd be interested in this, and I plan to support it as well, in, in looking at the re-engagement number.
Yes, absolutely.
To understand of that 5,200 kids, how many did it bring back, you know, on that end of it? So I'm assuming that that's something that we'll have. And I guess I would love to systematically kind of look at that and go, in six months, if we could have just a recap back to the board to say, you know, we've had this many of those 5,200 kids re-engaged, I think that helps us as well in the whole conversation, too.
Absolutely agree.
Yep.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? It's unanimous, and thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Susan.
Thank you. I think there are a lot of happy children's librarians out there and a happy Mara.
Got to get to that 10 million hours here, 10 million minutes, not hours, 10 million minutes.
All right, we have our electronic meetings policy and bylaw reviews.
We do. So tonight, we are reviewing a new policy and revision to the bylaws. And this is all taken straight from an act Governor Holcomb signed back in April. This is giving us the option, in case we have trustees who need to attend meetings virtually. This is not requiring that we meet virtually. We may never use this, and that's okay. But the State Library is recommending that we do pass this policy and adjust our bylaws in case we ever need it. And we did vet this policy and the bylaws revision through Pete and Ted and their team. The only aspect of this new policy that is not set exactly from the law is the time period needed for advance notice for a trustee to inform us that they are attending virtually. And I'd be happy to go through this policy. Do you have any questions?
We had a similar action at the Capital Improvements Board, because we're governed by the same statutes and all. And on that question of what notice a trustee or commissioner should give, we determined that 48 hours was the deadline.
Okay.
But that's just a suggestion, that's what we adopted.
We had suggested, of course, this is up for discussion from this body. Board members must notify the board president within 72 hours, three business days before the regular meeting, or 48 hours, two business days for special meetings, to advise that the member will be attending electronically. This allows sufficient time to ensure that the appropriate notice and technology measures are put into place.
Do we feel like we have to give any special notice to the public that a board member is attending electronically? I don't know, I don't think there's any reason we would have to, as long as it's most efficient for the person. Okay.
Don't see that now.
And I like what this is doing. I mean, basically, they're saying. I mean, basically, they're saying, obviously, last year, there were a lot of special, special things put into place. And this is basically saying, because it was state law, that if you weren't present in the room, you couldn't vote, even if you were on. I remember being on a phone call, coming back from Indianapolis and listening to the board meeting and going, well, I can't vote, even though I'm attending the board, um, virtually in that sense. So I love that they're adding this in and solidifying it to our operating as well, so.
And the adoption of this policy would require a change in our bylaws. So you have that in your packet as well. And as a last-minute addition at each of your place settings, um, you have a copy of our bylaws with the additions that we are evaluating tonight highlighted in yellow.
And the additions are only related to this electronic policy, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. The only other note that I'll make is that it, it shows on the first page that there's a, it was amended May 10th. And I believe that date would probably be today, once it's approved.
Correct.
So just making sure that that's caught.
Good catch. Any questions? Well, entertain a motion to change the bylaws as discussed?
So moved. Second.
A second.
Second.
Second, Marty, okay, Kent and Marty, any further discussion?
I, I do have a question, I'm just, I want to make sure I understand this. Under the Section 5, the attendance requirement? Is this saying that even if somebody attends electronically? Say, we have three board members in person, one attends electronically, can be seen and heard, but the other, for whatever reason, can't attend at all? That is not going to be a quorum? We have to have at least four members in person to have a quorum?
Correct.
Correct.
And is that part of the government's law?
Correct.
Okay.
Looking at Ted, yes.
Yes, nodding along, everybody's comments are very well-taken.
Okay, all right, so quorum has to be here in person, no matter what.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I'm support that then.
Okay, seeing or hearing no other questions, all those in favor of the change, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed by nay, and that passes.
And Ben, I think we'd also need a motion on the policy as well.
The policy as well. Okay, may we have a motion to adopt the policy?
So, I guess, help me understand that. I saw that the, are you talking about the Indiana State policy that was included, or what policy?
This would be a separate document, policy for electronic meetings and signatures of the library board of trustees. It mirrors the language that is in the bylaws.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's, at that point, this becomes an operating policy?
Right, because we did not have an existing policy, so this is brand-new.
I dismiss that that wasn't in there, so, okay.
How would you like to make the motion, now you know about it?
Sure, so moved.
All right, and a second.
Sharon.
Second, Jim?
Sharon seconded it.
Sharon seconded it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, and the policy is now implemented, since we didn't have it. All right, let's move to item 12. And this is our continuing discussion on our mask requirement.
Thank you. So per the latest CDC guidelines, and also with the changing policies at both city and county buildings that I'm sure you're familiar with, we are also recommending a change in masks for patrons' policy here at the library. Um, we are recommending that for patrons, masks are optional. We would recommend that non-vaccinated patrons continue to wear masks, but that would be enforced on the honor system, and our staff would not be asking patrons about their vaccination status. Masks would be optional.
So it's quite a change from the current policy.
It is, it is, and that is based on the latest guidelines from the CDC.
Can I have that in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Now settle down, Jim.
I'll second.
And we have a second, Paul. You don't want a second?
Oh, I'll second it, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought somebody did.
The enthusiasm is overwhelming.
Well, I'm glad to see the madness start to stop, so.
All right, we have a motion made by Jim and seconded by Paul. Is there any further, any discussion, rather?
Yeah, does this change the Rock the Plaza thinking at all, which I still believe was very premature?
It does, Paul, so we are working on seeing if we can schedule some concerts for late summer.
A question I had relative to the summer reading program and the learning program?
Yes.
How does that affect, how do the, does the mask-wearing pertain to that?
I don't think it really does. We had planned on having our programs outside. I think outside is a great spot for children's programs this summer. You can have more kids, you can be louder, and you can be messier. So I, I don't really see it having an impact.
All right.
Did I get? Yeah, sure, um, well, no.
With the outside, you live in Indiana, and the weather often rains, or it looks like it's going to rain. Is there a chance those events will move inside, or will it be canceled every time?
I am not sure about that, I'll be very honest with you. Um, I do know that we do have some tents available, so that might be an option as well.
Further questions are, now, this deals with patrons and patrons only.
Correct.
So are we going to address the employee part next? Okay, got you.
All right, Sharon, did you have a?
No, sir, I'm waiting to call the question.
Call the question, the question is called, all those in favor of the policy, the mask requirement policy as outlined by Susan, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed by nay? And this goes into effect?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
But I will ask for our public and our patrons' patience because it will take us a few days to change sign-its and change the website, but we can begin enforcing or, or not enforcing, if you will, um, the change in policy tomorrow.
The second portion of the discussion regarding masks is management and staff.
Correct, and my request is that staff masking remain a decision of library management. What I would like to do for the coming weeks is to still ask our staff to wear masks when they are in library buildings. Um, I would not require them to wear masks when they are outside doing children's programs, but I would like to see our staff still wear masks for at least a few more weeks, and this is why. Um, as you know, children under 12 are not eligible for vaccines yet. And we do hope to see children in our buildings this summer. So I really want to get a gauge of parents' comfort level with their children being in our buildings before, um, staff are allowed to not wear masks anymore. Also, everything I have read has said that we may be in for some changes in OSHA's guidelines. Um, right now on OSHA, which OSHA governs workplace health. And right now, on the front page of OSHA's website, it says that OSHA is reviewing the recent CDC guidance and will update our materials on this website accordingly. Until these updates are complete, please refer to the CDC guidance for information on measures appropriate to protect fully vaccinated workers. I would hate to tell staff that masks are optional and then get guidance from OSHA soon afterwards. That would make us need to reverse that decision. So I understand the, um, interest and anxiousness to drop the mask, I completely respect that. But what I am asking is to allow management to have a little more time, um, to observe the situation and ask staff to stay masked for a little while longer.
Thank you for clarifying that. Is, can I have that in the form of a motion in a second, and we can discuss?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, now discussion.
So OSHA, I'm assuming this is coming from our legal counsel. OSHA's not provided guidance, we just want to keep it in place in case they say, oh, you need to continue to...
OSHA's current guidance from their webpage is simply to refer employers back to the CDC, um, modifications in the mask guidance that were issued, I believe, on May 17th.
They've issued multiple, they've issued multiple guidance, many of which are now very questionable, but, okay.
But, but nonetheless, those are still the CDC guidances that are out there. And so they've simply referred back, they have indicated on their webpage that they anticipate issuing some sort of guidance, but they haven't, and there's no indication as to when that might occur. So right now, they simply refer back to the existing CDC guidance at the various levels that the CDC...
So is it a liability issue for the employer? And I'm talking broadly, not just the library, but I know there's a lot of concern, obviously, about that. Um, but that's not, I mean, that, what, I don't see that being resolved for a long time.
It, it's possible, we don't know. Uh, you know, the government, uh, at both the federal and state level in employment matters has continually tried to keep up, and it just can't with all the changes that have gone on over the last 18 months. The OSHA guideline is to provide a safe workplace, so the concern is always, what does it mean not to be a safe workplace? And so, over the last 18 months, the mask guidance has been out there if you can't socially distance or provide any other modifications to the workplace to protect an employee. So right now, the overriding guidance is whether or not you can provide a safe workplace. There have been suggestions, both at the federal and state level, to provide immunity to employers, but no such laws have been passed at this time, that I'm aware of certainly, and I think others, and, and there are plenty of employers here in the audience and, and on the trustees. But no, there's no official guidance for immunity either from a worker's comp or a safe workplace OSHA standard yet.
I have no problem transferring responsibility to you on this, but that's what we're doing, essentially. But we do have a fiduciary responsibility, so my question to you then is, are we abdicating to us, for lack of a better term, our responsibility? And is there liability by doing so? Do you see what I'm saying?
That, that's a great question, and one that's probably more apt for an executive session. But, but nonetheless, the board of trustees can have, provide input to management. Uh, but management ultimately would make that decision, is my understanding about how to treat and guide the employees so that they are in compliance with the OSHA guidelines.
But historically, this board has been, in my opinion, involved in minutia we shouldn't be involved in. Now we're kind of for this particular subject going in the opposite direction. So I have concerns.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it, but, yeah, I appreciate you, you, you answering those.
Yeah, I, I kind of like, I, I also believe this is something I want to support, that the executive director could decide. Quite frankly, I think we know, we don't, we shouldn't be involved in that, in the minutia of her, her direction to the employees for a lot of different things in here, including, I think, the mask requirement. So I do believe we should, I guess it's a motion to, we're going to let her make that decision, and I would agree with that as well.
I'd like to know, Susan, have you, have you, um, personally, I'm going to support it and vote yes. Um, when I go out and about in the community, I see, um, Lowe's, restaurants, stores where the patriots of those stores are unmasked by choice. Um, but the employees are still masked, um, by policy, I'm assuming. So have you polled your employees to see what the temperature wa, is for them with or without masks? And the reason I ask that question is because it's easy for us to sit in an ivory tower and think that we should tell them what's right for them, um, in terms of their health and safety. I do know as an insurance agent that the compression that we feel is on, um, the medical side, right? If people are infected, and then the costs that are associated with that. So that's one that the board won't have to experience when they have to pay those personal bills themselves. So have you taken that poll to find out where they are?
I have not taken a formal poll, but I've had a lot of conversations and a lot of interaction, and I will say that it is mixed. Um, we have a lot of fully vaccinated staff who still want to continue wearing masks, which is their right. We will not stop them from doing that. Um, we have some staff who probably also, um, feel like they've done everything right, they've gotten vaccinated, and they're ready to not wear masks. So it's a, it's not a monolith. It, it's varied as public opinion is as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment?
Are you seeing any employers that are asking employees to sign waivers? I mean, obviously, you can always wear a mask, but if they don't want to wear a mask, is a waiver something that's being implemented anywhere?
I, I have not. Generally, my understanding is that even if you ask an employee to waive a safety requirement or safety request, that's generally ineffective, uh, if they would then go back. So I, I haven't seen any, any waivers.
Got you.
At least in regard to the COVID issues that we're talking about.
Kent, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, I also believe that this is a, a management decision on that end of it. Um, I, I will say that I've received three separate communications from staff, um, requesting that masks be removed. And, and their, their reasoning for all three were that they feel that is a bear, it is a barrier for their customer service to patrons, um, from that standpoint. So I just offer that to you, you know, from that standpoint, because you don't necessarily know all the communications we get on that end. Um, I also think that as you're considering your policy, I think a black and white, always on, always off, is, i- is something that is too strict, in a sense, when you look at, um, the vastness of our buildings, that you've got a tremendous amount of space where people can safely social distance, even if they're not wearing a mask. And I guess I look at it and go, I would love for you to consider something along the lines of, you know, if they're, if they're serving patrons in a, in a, in a service capacity, or if they're in a place where they can't social distance, that that's when it would be required, otherwise, feel free to not have it on. I guess that's just, for me, the common sense side of it on that end. And, and we've gotten flack, and I know other people, I've gotten flack because I sit here in this meeting without a mask on. Well, we are eight feet apart as we sit here right now, you know, from that standpoint. And it's like, you either follow the CDC guidelines at six feet and social distance and all that, or you don't. And I know it's our policy, but I just look at it and go, I just feel like we need to be as flexible as we can to make sure that there's options for people whenever they're, whenever we're making this decision as well. So that's just really an editorial comment more than anything, but.
I, I think that's a good point, and I think that's precisely why relegating it to the decision of onsite management makes sense. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Opposed by nay? Well, good luck, Susan.
Thank you.
Is there any new business that should come before this body?
I had a question, Ben, um, it kind of related to this and, and COVID-related. Uh, when, when all this started, there was a very comprehensive plan as to how we were responding as the library board. But to my recollection, we've not seen a, as we've removed the restrictions and the different things along those lines. And specifically, what I'm thinking of is, you know, are we still quarantining books? Um, is that still necessary on that end of it? Are, it, we had the children's play area closed, I, I wasn't sure if that's open, and our play activity areas for kids, are those back open? We, at this point, we weren't allowing food and drink because of the masks. Are we going to now allow that to be back in? Then lastly would be, um, I feel like we've made a lot of our spaces very sterile by taking all the furniture out and taking some of that comfiness away of what a library is.
Sure.
Those are my main four on that end of it, but could you respond to that, Susan?
Absolutely. So we stopped quarantining books back in March.
Okay.
And as far as food and drink, effective tomorrow, food and drink rules go back to pre-COVID times. Now, people have been allowed to bring food and drink in meeting rooms for a while now, at least a month. And as far as furniture, I am going to ask Kim Boland to speak to that because she has had multiple meetings with staff about this very issue this week.
I'll call on the floor. Um, which will then allow us to have a chat room. Um, the most complicated one are the... Uh, we have some pieces, um, aren't very durable that we can't clean, and we want to be able to... So we're just talking through with managers about how to, best about things more sanitary. The reading tower, hope, knock on wood, we're getting some new push-in that year. Um, if those come in, we hope not, hoping the reading tower back up. The, the ELC is a little bit of a different, uh, situation with the Early Learning Center, um, because, uh, does need some work in there. And, uh, you remember, the foundation gave us $250,000 to redo it. We have been working on a plan to, um, update that with that money. So that's a little bit more complicated, but I'm hoping some of the interactives and the other stuff are, be able to get on the floor. Did that answer all your questions?
It did, thank you.
Any further questions? No new business before the body? I see there's no one that's signed up for public comment, so I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we're adjourned, thank you so much, be safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for whoever set the room up so nicely. It goes noticed, noticed.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you.
Production facilities provided by Access Fort Wayne. Learn more under the Explore tab at acpl.info.